Usually they're sitting like behind different.
Not too big.
Yep.
Yeah, aren't it?
It is six o'clock. We will call this meeting of the mayor and board to order. Before we get started, I want to, I think everybody here can acknowledge that this is the first meeting of a new term, and I want to welcome Alderman Kitchens and Alderman at large, Laura McLendon, to the board, and we will get right down to business. So if I could call up Henry Bowling to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Miller, would you lead us in our implication?
Thank you, man. Let us pray. Father and Father, Lord, we come before we do anything, we say, we are so thankful for this day that you allowed each of us to witness that we realize we'll never witness again. And we pray, Father, we go forward today in the business of this city that you, that the decision that we make, well, first of all, I'll be pleading in that sight. Then, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity you have given each and every one of us to serve this community in whatever capacity it might be. We ask you, Lord, continue, Lord, to bless our soldiers wherever they might be. Then, Lord, we just thank you for just being who you are. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I do want to remind all the board members that this is a live broadcast meeting, and if you could speak into the mics so everyone can hear you because they will be archived. I get complaints from people a lot of times that say they couldn't hear what we were saying, so I may be saying this to remind myself as much as anybody. Item four is a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of items to the agenda. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to move items twenty-four and forty-three to executive session.
Say those two numbers again, please, sir.
Twenty-four and forty-three.
There is a motion to move items twenty-four and forty-three to executive session. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Madam clerk, we'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Alderman Robinson?
Nay.
Alderman Wicker?
Nay.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Nay.
And that motion fails. Did you have another one, Alderman Kitchens?
Yeah, I'd like to add an order to the relevant department heads to halt enforcement of a portion of the signed ordinance, namely Appendix B, Article eleven, Section four point four, as well as the entirety of the signed ordinance. Temporary enforcement for, temporary halt enforcement for ninety days. I mean, primarily, primarily, the intent behind that is I think there's been a lot of allegations that those have not been, that maybe we don't have the capacity to enforce those equally or completely. I mean, I know as far as my election, that, I mean, we very explicitly, the city very explicitly made the choice to halt enforcement on Election Day just because we didn't have the manpower to really enforce it. And so, you know, if we're in our, in the position where we're having to make exceptions, then we're inherently not going to, that's inherently an acknowledgement that we're not able to enforce it equally at all times. So, I mean, I think the city has acknowledged that just in not enforcing on Election Day. And then, you know, we had some, with the signed ordinance, we had a few instances where I just, there were signs that were larger than what was compliant that went out, both in the Alderman race and, you know, up until very recently with the Senate race, and both Senate candidates have acknowledged that they believe it has been enforced unequally. And then as far as the noise ordinance, those situations are a little bit harder to identify. However, with the noise ordinance, it's a pretty convoluted ordinance to begin with. I think it's very difficult for business owners to know what their expectations are, and so it's kind of difficult for them to know that they're abiding by them.
There is a motion on the table to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
I'd like to ask the attorney if that's even legal, we can do that.
You can amend it. And you can take, you can take it up, but if you're going to change it, then you've got to, you've got to publish it.
This wouldn't be an amendment to the ordinance, this would be a directive to, this would be an order to the department heads that are in charge of enforcing it to utilize, utilize those resources differently.
It's an amendment to the enforcement of the ordinance. This is just my opinion. I mean, I think there's a certain part of the government process that ordinances are reason that you have to give a notice and publication when those go into effect. I don't think there's any difference, I'm not saying you can't go around tonight.
Yeah.
You certainly can, you know, I certainly think these kinds of things, ordinances, it's best to do it in a regular course of business. Put it on the agenda, give the public a chance to come and talk about it if they want to. Or, or against.
Yeah.
Certainly, there may be plenty of people who agree with you, Mr. Kitchens, that they should be, it should be changed. My opinion is that it's a change in the enforcement of the ordinance that changes the ordinance. So if you, if the board approves it going forward tonight to amend the agenda, that's okay. If that, anything changes in the ordinance, you're going to have to publish it.
And, and just to be clear, essentially, if this motion were to pass, the way that I'm, I'm, and, you know, you're the attorney, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I'm wording it specifically is that essentially the wording of the ordinance would not change. And so, it's, and it's a temporary stay in enforcement. This isn't a permanent change in, in how we're wording the ordinance, is to say, give us ninety days to look into the ordinance, dive into them and see if, and put a stay on them for now, because the problem is, would you agree that if we're enforcing our ordinances unequally, then that does open us up to a risk of liability?
I think we're getting into a discussion on the actual thing instead of just the agenda item at this moment.
What is that, what do you mean by that?
I mean, we were starting to discuss the item, not whether it's on the agenda or not.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So is there a second to adding that to the, to the agenda tonight?
I second.
There's a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call vote on adding that item to the agenda.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderwoman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Alderman Robinson?
Nay.
Alderman Wicker?
Nay.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And the motion fails. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Aye. Sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's okay.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have an agenda. Item five is to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda. Could I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of Alderman meeting on June seventeenth. I will look at the attorney when I make this statement, but since the two new board members were not part of that meeting, y'all should probably abstain on that vote. Okay? So the motion, could, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of Alderman meeting on June seventeenth?
No more.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye. I'll abstain.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item seven is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item eight is the donations docket.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Donations docket passes. Item nine is the personnel docket. Is there a motion on that?
Second.
It's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Personnel docket passes. Item ten is the approval of a proclamation through the Baptist Family twenty-second family reunion, July fourth through sixth of 2025. I'll quickly read this. Is there anyone here from the Baptist family tonight? Okay, we'll make sure we get this to them. This is the Baptist family twenty-second reunion, July fourth through sixth, 2025. Whereas the Baptist family reunion was started by Mr. Frederick Baptist in 1984 along with the planning committee, and whereas the records in the DeSoto County Chantilly Clerk's office show that Needham Boone was the first black man to purchase land in DeSoto County, Mississippi. Needham started out with a forty acre plot, but eventually purchased an additional three hundred acres, and whereas Needham and Chaney Boone were slaves owned by a DeSoto County slave master who brought them to DeSoto County from some part or area of the Carolinas. The family can be traced back as far as the eighteen hundreds, and whereas the name Baptist stemmed from Martha Holly, who changed her son's name to Hiram Baptist, a surname gathered from the denominational Baptist church. And whereas the Baptist family is a strong faith-based family with integrity, hope, courage, determination, passion, respect, dignity, pride, perseverance, wisdom, love, immeasurable excellence, and positivity. The word impossible does not exist in the Baptist vocabulary. Now therefore, I, Chip Johnson, Mayor of the City of Fernando, and the Board of Aldermen, do hereby wish to honor the Baptist family as they celebrate their twenty-second family reunion, expressing our gratitude for their positive and lasting impact on our community. Is there a motion to approve that proclamation for the Baptist family?
No more.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. The next one does not require a motion. Item eleven is to recognize Denise Harden as the Public Works Employee of the Month for May.
All right. Jeff, Nate, Mayor and Board. Tonight I have the honor of recognizing someone who truly sets the standard for excellence in our workplace. Our Employee of the Month is no other than Miss Denise Harden. She's worked for us for just over three years now. If you've seen Denise in the office or in action, you know just how much she brings to the table every single day. She's here, she's on time, and she's ready to go, always giving her very best. That kind of consistency is rare and incredibly valuable. What really makes Denise stand out is the way she cares for everyone around her. She looks out for her teammates, supports the entire team, and makes sure nothing falls through the cracks. And I'll be honest, she even keeps me in line, and we all know that's probably a full-time job in itself. So when it comes to customer service, Denise is second to none. She has, has an amazing ability to stay calm even in tough situations, and she helps our customers feel calm, too. She listens, she resolves problems, and she does it all with grace, patience, and professionalism. Denise doesn't seek attention, she leads by example through her actions, her attitude, and her heart. She makes a lasting impact on everyone she works with. So Denise's recognition is more than well-deserved. Thank you for, for your dedication, your kindness, and your steady commitment to excellence. So, on behalf of the Public Works Department and the City of Hernando, thank you.
She had, she had nerves enough to ride in the truck with Lee Wiley with picking up Bruce.
Actually, could I have a motion to approve this Employee of the Month?
No. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Now you're official. We can have our picture with you. Congratulations, Denise.
Thank you.
Item twelve is the approval of a professional services agreement with Grassland Incorporated to provide guidance and direction at the fields at the Hernando Civic Center at Renaissance Park. Jared, would you like to come up? And this was asked to be put onto the main agenda by Alderwoman McLendon, and I think it was a good catch. She noted that the contract did not have a cap on the number in there, so if you would speak to that, Jared?
Yeah, sure. Good evening. So I've got a memo here, and I did talk with Stephen Sandridge from Grassland, Inc., to that point, and we feel comfortable that not to exceed four three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which would be twenty-five hours, would be appropriate. So our goal would be basically using Stephen and Grassland, Inc. for consulting, no labor, no materials, we would provide the materials, and training to work the fields, dirt portions of the fields in the summertime. We've got some downtime before fall season starts, so that's, that's the goal. Basically get the crew in a position where they can do it.
And that would increase their professionalism and the ability to possibly get wet fields open center?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the goal.
How much you say it was?
Well, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour is their fee, and then not to exceed...
Twenty-five hours?
Twenty-five hours, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, we can alter the contract to make that part of the motion. Is everybody okay with that? Alderman McLendon, is that, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to alter the contract to not exceed twenty-five hours, and we'll have a roll call vote on the item.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item thirteen is just the approval to publish the FY twenty-six tax levy and budget notice of public hearing. We're not going to be publishing the tax rate. Madam clerk, I'm looking at you and I'll make sure I say it. So there is no tax rate set, this is just to allow us to publish that there is going to be a public hearing.
When we'll get any numbers back from Jeff Fitch's office?
Jeff Fitch's office said around the tenth, is what I remember last.
This month?
Yes.
He said, on today, he said that he'll be presenting the number Monday.
Okay, good.
Which is going to get him to the county Monday, and then to you, man, also Monday.
Good, that's new news to me.
Yeah, it just, it just happened today.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion for the approval of the publishing of the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item fourteen is the approval of the resolution finally granting Tegra Medical, Inc. exemption from adverum taxation on personal and real property. And I think Jim Plantigan is here to present that tonight and give us a little background. If the, I'm gonna call it the old board, remembers, we did the initial approval of this already, it's been sent to the state, and now it's back for final approval. So if you could guide us through that a little bit, I know the, the new ones probably need a little education, and the rest of us need a little re-education on it.
That's why I'm here. Mayor and Board, thank you so much for this opportunity, and this is simply a resolution from the Department of Revenue approving the, the motion and the action that you took on behalf of Tegra Medical in their expansion. And so I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have about Tegra Medical, about the tax abatement process, and would be more than glad to, to hopefully answer that for you, and just maybe walk through, give you sort of a quick primer of how this process works. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Could you just, and just briefly say, can I explain the economic impact Tegra has had?
I would love to, thank you. Tegra Medical, Hernando is very fortunate to have one of the most highly advanced manufacturers in DeSoto County. They are one of the preferred vendors for Medtronic, Smith-Nehme, and my history's going to be a little rough, so I might miss a few steps here, but this was started in a garage by Dale Cole and his dad, Cole's Tool Works, possibly. I may have some names and dates mixed up, but it did begin there. And then from there, Dale Cole saw a vision, and saw the medical device companies in the Memphis area, and thought, well, we can re-machine this, we can reconfigure this to the hardware for the medical devices. Thus, Tegra Medical was born. Now, I believe it was sold initially to a private equity group, and then from there, the Swiss company, a multinational, multi-billion dollar conglomerate, purchased Tegra Medical. And again, it's really a shining star when you, when you look at the industrial community throughout DeSoto County, whether it's wages, whether it's the stability of the jobs there, but just the level of training that it affords our students coming out of Northwest Community College is, is remarkable. And so they have requested, as they have requested in the past, a tax abatement on an expansion. Now, this expansion was simply capital equipment to keep them competitive. Now, you might have noticed in the application that there were no jobs created. That's not unusual. So often, a company to remain competitive has to obviously not only retrofit their facility, but also has to improve and bring on new equipment to replace older equipment. That is what Tegra Medical has done. So to, to ensure that they continue to expand here in DeSoto County and not in other locations throughout the U.S., we compete so often on these expansions. So often, you may be more familiar with us competing on new locations to DeSoto County, we compete on expansions. I'm working with a company right now, and they have two other operations, one in Iowa and one out west. It is not guaranteed that that expansion will occur in one of the communities here in DeSoto County, but we're doing everything we can to be competitive, to attempt to induce that expansion here in a very responsible manner. And the word responsible is important because you, as a board, made the decision a number of years ago, these are partial property tax abatements. There has never been a full property tax abatement. Number one, because state statute does not allow you to exempt school taxes. So every company, manufacturers and distributors pay on day one school taxes, full school taxes. The property tax abatement that you approved was a five-year abatement on personal property. Now, let's say this company was a new company locating to Hernando. Traditionally, you would be reviewing a ten-year property tax abatement, but because this is personal property that depreciates more quickly than real estate does, you've taken the responsible approach of only offering a five-year abatement. And again, this is a partial abatement. So just to give you some, some, my math is not real good, but just to give you some, some general numbers, full taxes on this particular capital investment would be approximately seventy-two hundred dollars a year. With the exemption or the abatement, and that would be four, five years, it's approximately five thousand dollars. Schools receive around ten thousand dollars on this expansion. And what we've always said is, this is what you get when they don't expand, and this is what you get when they do. And so from a property tax standpoint, stabilizing the workforce there, the wages that they pay, their annual payroll is approximately, let's see here, I had that number a little while ago.
Like eight million?
About, about eight million dollars. That turns over in the, in the community six and seven times. So the value here, both indirect and direct, is, is tremendous for the city, and just to have a company of this caliber. So again, I'm probably saying a little too much, but I want to see if any of y'all have some questions about this.
What are some of the other markets that were, that they're considering as far as expansion?
I don't know that. I just know that they do have other markets within the U.S. This specific company that I'm working with in another community in DeSoto County, it was specifically presented to us on the front end that if not for this, they could very well expand to another location. So I wanted to make that clear. Tegra's business model may, probably is a little different, possibly, than this other company, but it's no less important to recognize that these companies have got to either retrofit their buildings or purchase new equipment to remain competitive, and that's what it comes down to.
I'd just be interested to see how the taxes in DeSoto County unabated compare to the taxes in those areas are unabated, because we have pretty low tax rates to begin with.
Well, I tell you, that's, that's the fifty thousand dollar question. In economic development, we really don't know a lot of times what our competitors bring to the table. All we know is that we can put the best foot forward, and because you've taken such a responsible approach to property tax incentives, that it is just a partial exemption. That has been very impressive to them because you do not exempt parks and library taxes. You do not exempt bonded indebtedness, and you do not exempt fire protection. So that, that immediately goes into your revenue stream, and if not for the expansion, there would be no new, new, new opportunities, if you will.
So if our tax rates were to increase dramatically, it might hurt our chances of continuing to get your, or being considered for your expansion?
That's a topic we need to discuss because we are competitive. Presently, we're competitive, but there are ten thousand other economic development organizations in this nation either trying to recruit or retain their companies. And so we have got to continue to put the best foot forward, and again, you've taken such a responsible approach that I think other, other counties in the state take notice.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Plantigan?
It sounds like they've already made the reinvestment in their facility, right? No additional jobs, I understand that. I work for a chemical company, we have to maintain our equipment. I work for a for-profit company, and Tegra is for-profit as well. Taxes is part of that equation, so in my mind, it doesn't make sense for someone that a business that's already been established to continue to get exemptions on it. And I know it's a smaller percentage, and we're still recovering some of it, but in my opinion, that doesn't make sense when they're already established, and I don't believe they have a full eighty employees, I think it's closer to seventy total at that facility. The turnover there's been pretty high. The wages are good, though, you are correct.
And they've got a great pipeline with Northwest Community College. It's really interesting with their advanced machining program there. Students that begin that program in their first year, you'll have Smith-Nehme, you'll have Medtronic and others standing in the halls along with Tegra Medical, waiting to recruit that student after their first year. So they have been a very responsible citizen, and I'd like to share something with y'all I pulled off the webpage, which I think you'll be, be pretty impressed. This is a multinational, global company. I pulled up the webpage, in their homepage... In their homepage, reflected somewhere that I think you'll recognize. There were about six or seven photographs on the webpage, but I think you'll recognize that one of five photographs on this Swiss company's webpage was in front of the courthouse. And I believe this was five cable on, but I felt that was pretty good exposure for the city's residents. This will not be the first company that will come and make a request similar to this. Again, to keep our companies continuing to expand, continuing to invest, it's important that we believe to the city and for the company to continue to honor these abatements. These are brought before a committee, a tax abatement committee, to be fully vetted. So often, we find out, to your question, that if not for this abatement, they could very well make the investment somewhere else. But again, it's to keep them competitive. And so it's not unusual that maybe new jobs may not be created, but the retention of jobs is what's most important.
I guess that begs the question, then, if there's no new jobs being created, but they have a pipeline from one of the local universities, how does that equate? Are there that many people retiring out?
Well, with turnover, absolutely, yes.
It's confusing to me that a company at that scale would be concerned about such a small tax break in Hernando when they've been established here for this long.
Again, that's left up to the company to decide.
To the mayor's point earlier, I was not part of the previous board, and this is mostly a formality thing, but I just figured I'd ask some questions, because I don't think most citizens would just know offhand any of this information.
Sure, and I would invite, the mayor sits on this ad hoc committee, this Business Investment Incentive Committee, and they meet on the second Tuesday of every month. Now, this month, we're not meeting because we don't have any property tax abatement request. But that would be a good meeting to sit in, to see how these are vetted ahead of time, because we are very careful to bring a company before you that hasn't received a lot of vetting and understanding what their business case and model is, because we want to be responsible to the city, too. And so again, Tegra, I believe, has proved themselves here in the city and continue to prove themselves. And again, the resolution that you're looking at tonight is really the approval from the Department of Revenue. And I'd be more than glad to come back and, on any other property tax abatement request in the future, and go through these with you. Again, I won't say it's unusual that new jobs are not created, but again, it just keeps them competitive.
Jim, I feel like in 2021, when we had a fairly large turnover of the board, we had a meeting at the Economic Development Council, just to sort of understand better, you know, what y'all do and all that kind of stuff. It may be good, I mean, I think for all of us to have a refresher, because honestly, when you get talking, I mean, your head can start swimming a little bit, because there's numbers flying around and everything else, and just to better understand that piece of it. And, you know, also, I think the, I'll give Tegra credit from a standpoint of what they do from a charitable standpoint locally, probably exceeds whatever this, you know, tax abatement is. I mean, they certainly try to be a good community partner. But I think it'd be great if we could set a date up where whatever board members wanna come to the Economic Development Council and just kinda hear more about that. It'd be a benefit to us.
Yeah, we could work with Jim's office and get that set up for y'all.
Because their new Alderman, obviously, in the city of Horn Lake, I think it might be an opportunity maybe to bring the other cities together. No, we would welcome that opportunity.
We'll work on that.
Okay, great.
And this certainly isn't me picking on Tegra. This is just the first one that comes across my desk, so it's gonna have the most questions. And then I'll learn and have less questions, different questions later on, but thank you.
Oh, absolutely, it's our privilege, so.
There are no more questions.
Other questions?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second, roll call vote.
Alderman Kitchens.
Nay.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman McLendon.
Nay.
Alderman Woman Lynch.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Alderman Wicker.
And that motion passes. Jim, thank you for being here.
And I would encourage you to go to the webpage. As I said, I scroll down, it's like the fourth picture. It's huge for Hernando, so thanks again.
Thank you very much. Chief, could you come up with the next two items? Item fifteen is the request to set the speed limit within the Delta Landing PUD at twenty miles per hour. That takes a recommendation from our police chief, so I guess we can hear it for the record, chief.
Yes, I recommend twenty miles per hour.
Y'all have any questions on that item with the chief? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. That motion passes. And item sixteen is the approval to discontinue contributions to Crime Stoppers. You wanna give a very brief?
Yes, I will. Couple weeks ago, South Haven Chief Kern sent all the chiefs an email regarding the Crime Stoppers. He had a couple of questions with Crime Stoppers that they could not answer. They could not provide adequate answers to where the money's going, how many tips they have provided to the city, to the different cities in the county. So he went to his board and decided to temporarily stop payment to Crime Stoppers until we could get to the bottom of what the issue is. Once he sent me that email, I felt like it was in our best interest for our money to temporarily stop until we can find the issue and get it fixed and not send our money somewhere we don't know where it's going.
Any questions for the chief on that? And I would say that I left a word out of here. If one of you makes the motion, I think I would say approval to temporarily discontinue contributions to Crime Stoppers until we get to the bottom of it. Is there a motion?
Motion. To temporarily discontinue contributions to Crime Stoppers.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. That motion passes. Chief, thank you. Item seventeen is a public hearing for the DWSI Water System Improvement Project on Bahalia Road. I am now officially announcing that this is a public hearing for that. Joe Frank will come up and lead us in this portion of the meeting that is a public hearing.
Okay. First of all, we were authorized on January the seventh to apply for this loan through the Health Department. So from that point on, we've been working on the paperwork that's necessary to be able to borrow that money. Our public hearing notice appeared in the paper on May the fifteenth for this, for tonight. Topics that we need to include is the facilities plan, which I have here, we'll talk about that, location of the project, landowners affected by the project, the cost of the project, and what are the environmental impacts of doing this project. So we've got to go through that. I'll start with the facilities plan first, and this is what it kinda looks like. It really goes back to when the city purchased North Mississippi Water Association's certificated area and all of their improvements, and looking at some ways that that system could be incorporated with the city's system. Because with the purchase of that system, we were then having three water plants. And I guess you would really say three different water systems, because they are tied together, but they do not run together. So as we move through the project, we know, we remember back when we had to make the improvements to the Jaybird plant, we had to install a new line, that new water main along Holly Springs Road. And at that point, we began to look at what was gonna be next as far as water improvements. So we looked at a new plant, which you can see that's going in now, being constructed near Bahalia Road and Getwell Road, and then a new elevated tank over on the Madison Lakes property. So we went through, and that's part of the facilities plan, as to why we chose those locations, how the new plant was gonna affect the other plants, how all that was gonna work, what were the problems now, and how were we gonna fix those problems as we try to move water through the city, provide fire protection, provide for all the development? So those projects were all funded, and I guess we're here tonight for a plan to install a water main on Bahalia Road that will connect the new water plant on Bahalia Road with the elevated tank over on Madison Lakes.
How big is that tank on Madison Lakes? How many gallons?
Two hundred thousand. So Austin has posted a layout of the line. You can see the water plant over there on your right-hand side of Getwell Farms' property. That's the development that you see going in there. The first part of their development is up near two sixty-nine. And so we'll be connecting that water plant to the elevated water tank. That will then, that will then connect the line to East Lake and ultimately the Jaybird Water System, and ultimately into the city system. So we'll sorta have a connection there. I have something for you to look at, to take home with you, to read about. So the first six pages are the design of the water line. You can kinda look at that, it shows how it's connected to the water plant and how it will connect to the elevated tank. One of the topics I need to discuss is, is there an alternative to putting in this water main? There's really not an alternative, I think, really, this really talks about the facilities as a whole, was there an alternative to not putting that elevated tank there, not connecting that up to our other systems, and not having a new water plant? So we've kinda explained that in this facilities plan, why that, why the city needed to have those facilities in that location.
Joe, at the water plant itself, isn't there a tank that is underground? So we have a storage tank there?
It is, that's a hundred thousand gallon tank. If you go out there, you can see the brick building sitting there. Well, the tank sits below that building right there, so. And I think y'all asked me kinda to have a same brick style as our other brick buildings and sort of fit in with this residential area more than a commercial area. And I think that's what you're gonna see. So the loan amount is one million thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The interest rate is one point nine five percent. That will be a note every year, sixty-five thousand dollars. So let's go to the other map. So this is a map of the affected property owners. I don't have that many, because if you know that area up there, it's kinda undeveloped on the north side of the road. And then East Lake is developing there on the south side. I see that they're out there moving dirt for their final connection to Bahalia Road, so. You can see the names I've got to get easements from. Now, in that area right now is just a three-inch line. That's all that was ever there, and that's, that area was pretty rural for a long time, so I guess it just really didn't need it any more than a three-inch line there. But you can, you know that right above that drawing is two sixty-nine, so. With this line that connects to the water plant, to the elevated tank, this sets the city up to be able to now go toward two sixty-nine. You can see Tulahoma Road, line that goes up from the elevated tank. And you can see Green Tea Road there, which just off of that plat right there is the Field House Building, and then ultimately, when you get up to the other interchange at two sixty-nine, so. I guess that's gonna be the next project, move water, move water north as that area develops. Okay. Another part of the project is the environmental impacts. The Health Department required me to notify four or five different groups. I notified about fifteen, but I've notified the archive and history. You'll have a letter in your little folder there that they approve it, that I'm not disturbing any historical property by putting that line along the right-of-way. And the National Heritage Program is responding the same way. I'm not changing any natural heritage that's going on in that area or any past historical things that are there. And then the Corps of Engineers, I've got to have their approval, because I'm moving dirt along a road ditch, and they have to issue me a permit, make sure that I'm in compliance with their organization. Have to notify NRCS on farmland. They have a restriction on construction within farmland. So I've notified them, and you have a letter in there saying they concur that I'm not disturbing any farmland. And I have to notify the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that there are no endangered species in that area. So that's their requirement.
Black bear in there? Black bear?
I don't think, I don't think DeSoto County has any endangered species. I've not run across any. So, let's see.
Will there be any interruption of service for people in that area? Is this upgrades occurring?
No. No, everybody will stay on the three-inch line, it'll be continuously working, and we'll eventually hook everybody up on the new twelve-inch line. We'll find their meters and then hook them up on the new line.
Will Bahalia Road have to be closed for some portion of time?
No.
At all? No?
No. We do, we do borrowings on the roads.
Okay.
It won't be closed. Let's see. How will it affect you financially, I guess? According to your indebtedness, it'll increase indebtedness by twelve percent. But your overall cost of running the water operation will only increase by three percent, by borrowing the sixty-five thousand dollars.
The sixty-five thousand annual payment?
Okay.
I think that's all I'm supposed to say.
How many years is that loan? How many years is the loan? Is it like twenty?
Twenty years.
Okay.
Is this a good time for me to see if there's anyone here to speak on this topic?
Yep.
Is there anyone here during this public hearing that would like to speak for or against this topic? Okay, hearing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Joe.
I'd like to ask a question. Now, and this is, I'm new to this, right? So is this loan paid out of the Public Works Fund, or is it paid out of the General Fund? So, is this loan paid out of the Public Works Fund or is it paid out of the general fund?
Public Works.
Okay.
It'll be paid by the ratepayers of the system.
Gotcha. Okay, that's what I thought. And so, now, this is bringing in a new system, or is this, or is this increasing the gauge of the water line? What's the scope of the project?
Well, it's increasing the size of the water line.
Yeah.
It's a three-inch there.
Right.
We need a twelve.
Okay.
To handle the...
Capacity.
Water in that area, fire protection, handle the water flow between the two plants, plant and elevated tank.
Mm-hmm.
And it really sets up another connection that you don't see on there.
Yeah.
Where it connects that Getwell Road up to the plant.
Okay, gotcha.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but Alderman Kitchens, one of the things that, the way it was explained to me, the tower, the elevated tank, when it's first installed before this line comes in, it'll be hooked to the vault, to the Jaybird Plant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, it'll be pulling from the Jaybird Plant.
Okay.
When we put this line in, it'll start, we'll valve off the connection to Jaybird, which will give that end more capacity because it'll be supplying this tank.
Gotcha.
And then, this new plant will be tied to that tower to supply it.
Okay.
So, capacity-wise, we're increasing the capacity on our overall water system.
Okay, gotcha.
And the size of the elevated tank is figured in as to what kinda supply you need in that area. So, it includes the supply up to McInville Road and supplying water eventually through Tulahoma Road under the 269. So, it's kinda figured in there.
Lord, do you think in twenty years we'll still need the same-sized tank or will we need a bigger tank?
I would think there's gonna be another elevated tank on the north side of 269 one day. And then, it'll be a final loop from Getwell Road up under 269 and a, and a loop all the way back around eventually.
And I will say that this was good planning from long ago, decades ago. We knew that Tulahoma would need to go through at some point, and a water line would need to go through, so when they built Interstate 269, we had them to change the plans to put a bridge over the future Tulahoma. So, that planning happened long ago, and that's why we're placing the elevated tank where it is, so that line can run under the interstate without a bore, because those borrowings cost a lot of money, and they're hard to, they cost more to upkeep as well.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Joe, did you cover everything?
I think so. I think I covered everything.
Okay.
Money-wise and environmental-wise.
Does this board have any more questions for Joe?
I guess I have like a point of clarification. So, I got the interest rate written down and what our annual payment would be, and then you said it would kinda even out to a three percent increase for all water users, but that this will also help with expansion north. Is that something where it could be recuperated later on as we are adding new things to this greater service area or something? Or, I don't even know if you're the right person to ask that question to, but it sounds like it's gonna give everybody better service for a three percent increase, but that, did I make that up too? Also, I could've just made that up about it being a three percent increase across the board for water users.
I think you said it was a three percent increase to our cost in the water.
To the cost, yeah.
That's right. Well, your budget is three million, let's see, where have I got it on here? Three million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And so...
You said it was like a twelve percent, on the ratio of the debt, and then, yeah, the three percent is what I wrote down for an increase, but I just wanted clarification. There's a lot of numbers flying around.
And this is only on the Water Department, not the entire Public Works Department.
Correct, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wrote down the right thing.
And this may or may not answer your question, but eventually, when someone runs a water line north up to Oklahoma, the new sixty-four acre development that's gonna be all commercial will tie onto that. Those will be a lot of new customers right there.
And that's kinda what I was getting at.
And that would help us recoup the costs, yeah.
And to the school as well, right?
The south end of the school will connect, like the Field House, just, it's a weird one, but the, our certificated area, the school actually sits in Nesbit Water, and the Field House sits in our area, Ball Field. So, we'll have some of the water at the school eventually.
Thank you. That answers what I had.
Won't this also supply water to the southwest corner of Getwell and 269?
Yes.
To that, there's a development there that's commercial land, residential for...
I'll think that...
Three hundred homes and...
The plant's gonna supply that, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, it would be supplied even without this line.
Okay.
Because it's built right there. They donated the land for the plant.
Okay.
And Madison Lakes donated the land for the elevated tank.
That's correct. And you know, you've already started a line coming from McInville to the Field House, so you've, you already got that line coming from the west and just gotta make that final connection one day as that area develops.
Any other questions? If there are no more questions, is there a motion? Or do we need a motion, Joe Frank? Or was this just a public hearing for...
I don't think you need a motion, other than I'll just report and paperwork will go in this package that we have held a public hearing.
Okay.
And satisfied that.
Then I will now call an end to the public hearing. Thank y'all all for participating. We will move on to item eighteen. Jared, would you like to come up and present that? This is requesting board approval to amend the Renaissance Park Design Services Phase Three splash pad, splash pad, nature play improvements agreement between the city and Kimley Horn and Associates.
Yes, so, the original agreement was approved on the June third meeting. After that meeting, we had a touch point with the representative from Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation, and based on some feedback we received from them, found to put us in the best position for this grant for the splash pad and nature play area at Renaissance Park. We need to amend that agreement to also include a site plan rendering to be developed by Kimley Horn, and then a signage design package that would go then into the construction documents and the bid set. So, basically, this would then create a shovel-ready construction document bid set. So, it would put us in the best position and actually fulfill the requirements that they have for the grant invitation. So, this is a ten, ten thousand dollar lump sum would add on, so your full lump sum on the agreement is two hundred and ten thousand. The grant we're seeking is a two million dollar grant, so really, this is a ten and a half percent city match is what we're looking for.
Everybody clear on that? Any questions? And I have a motion on the item.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a roll call vote.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank y'all. Thank you, Jared. Now, we have the statutory appointments. We'll do them one at a time. Item nineteen is the approval to appoint the city clerk, Pam Powell. Can we have a roll call vote? Oh, yeah, we need a motion, sorry. Yes, I got ahead of myself. Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item twenty is the approval to appoint Assistant City Clerk Nicole Hilarium.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Item twenty-one is the approval to appoint Deputy City Clerk Cynthia Brewer. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Item twenty-two is the approval to appoint Deputy City Clerk Beth Garcia. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item twenty-three is the approval to appoint Deputy City Clerk/Human Resources Director Julie Gates. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item twenty-four is the approval to appoint Police Chief as Shane Ellis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-five, the approval to appoint Fire Chief, Marshall Berry.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-six is the approval to appoint Court Clerk Cassandra Perry.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
And that motion passed. Item twenty-seven is the approval to appoint Deputy Court Clerk Susan Waldra.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-eight, the approval to appoint Deputy Court Clerk Melinda Moy.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-nine is the approval to appoint Deputy Court Clerk Jennifer Blue.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item thirty is the approval to appoint Deputy Court Clerk Amy McDermott.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Motion passes. Item thirty-one is the approval to appoint Municipal Judge Bob Morris.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item thirty-two is the approval to appoint Senior Municipal Judge Adam Emerson.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item thirty-three is the approval to appoint Senior Prosecutor Paige Williams.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item thirty-four is the approval to appoint Municipal Prosecutor Russell Jordan.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
That motion passes. Item thirty-five is the approval to appoint Public Defender Robert Johnson.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 36 is the approval to appoint public defender Clay Vanderberg.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Abstain.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item 37 is the approval that all other current city employees shall continue their at-will employment with the city of Hernando at their current compensation, subject to review and further action by the mayor and board of Alderman and subject to any and all handbooks, policies, orders, guides, rules, and/or regulation applicable to their employment and the employee list was in your packet. Is there a motion on that?
So move. Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Woman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item 38 is the approval to appoint municipal election commissioners, Robin Ainsworth, Dale Bellflower, and Katie Jewell.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item 39 is the approval to appoint Joe Frank Alderdale as the ADA coordinator required by MDA.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item 40 is to elect the mayor pro tempore.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Alderman Andrew Miller. Second.
There is a motion and a second to nominate Alderman Andrew Miller. We'll have a roll call vote.
Does he accept the nomination?
Will you accept Alderman Miller?
Since you did it, man.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, it's up for a vote, Madam Court.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Woman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item 41 is the approval to appoint planning commission members, Russell Jordan, Keith Hawkins, Shay Skeen, Andy Art, Larry Newsom, Justin Max, Jarrett Mashaw, and Kevin Thorne.
I have a motion, but if we spell Jarrett's name right, it's two Es. Two Es, two Rs, two Ts.
I did not know that. J-A-R-R-E-E-T-T.
J-E.
Two Es, two Rs, two Ts.
Oh, I got you. Okay, the E's there.
That's my motion.
Okay, got you.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item 42 is the approval to appoint historic preservation commissioner members Rachel Wright, Christopher Brown, Janie Norwood, Holly Steele, Jerry Edwards, Sydney Swatzen, Jennifer Shepherd, Erin Owen, and Rob Long.
Motion. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lynch?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Wicker?
Aye.
Alderman Kitchens?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Alderman McLendon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 43 is the approval to hire Stephen Pittman, the city attorney, and Josie Gilder as assistant city attorney and approve the mayor to sign the contract you had in your packet.
I do have some questions about this one. Because we spoke about it a little bit, but I reviewed the contract when you sent it over or when they sent it out. So I know that you're putting, you're wanting to have Josie as the assistant city attorney and that her, she would bill at the same rate that you do, essentially. I'm just trying to get a feel for what's the value of the contract because, I mean, how many hours did she work before? Because I know before, if you billed an associate, it was a hundred dollars an hour. Is that the rate you were billing at when she went to the planning meetings?
We didn't, we didn't bill any of that.
Okay, gotcha.
There's no other billing besides my billing.
Gotcha.
I don't anticipate there'd be a lot of billing from her, if any, at all.
Okay. It really wouldn't change much. Yeah, it wouldn't change. That's one of the reasons I wanted to move to executive session, but
No, that's okay. If, if she does any billing, it will be under my supervision.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to review it anyway.
And are, but you're still gonna attend all the meetings and
I'm gonna attend all the meetings, all the meetings.
Okay, all these meetings, not the planning, yeah.
She attends the planning.
Right.
And to be fair, if you happen to be absent for some unexplained reason, she covers for you.
Right, yeah. And so essentially, y'all weren't billing at all for the planning meetings?
No.
That's part of the contract. That's just kind of included. So when they show up at the meetings, they're not billing separately.
Oh, that's part of their retainer.
What I'm gonna try to do is give you a part of the bill, what we include in our retainer.
Gotcha.
We do a lot.